All right, so these are the signed ones.
Yes.
Um, this one is like, there's a typo here.
Oh, okay.
And then these are just for law enforcement.
Yep, okay.
Uh, fire and, uh, we'll get separate work at a certain time.
Okay, okay. Is this just on the title?
No, no, this is a good one.
Oh, okay.
And this also clarifies why only two of the four people.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
All right, I have six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting order.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming tonight. Go ahead and do roll calls. Deb?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended?
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
All right, on to the consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, update from presentations. Number one, update on holiday light rebate participation.
Sure, I'm really happy to report that sixty-four total households signed up for the holiday light rebate. Um, since putting that form online, a lot of people signed up online, used their phones, uh, and that number represents about a forty-five percent increase from last year. So, really, really good bump, and, uh, I think, uh, in future years, we can continue to see that going up, so I'm really happy about that. Um, next, uh, garbage and recycling, so, you know, we feel a lot of calls in City Hall about, you know, they missed my garbage, um, you know, frequently, so we put up a form online for people to report those instances. Uh, that link can be found on the homepage of the website, so if people are asking you around town, you know, bothering you at your job, like, hey, they missed my, my garbage, you can tell them to go to the homepage, click the link, fill out a, um, a quick report, takes thirty seconds, and then that form will automatically dispatch an email with that information directly to the waste company, so it kind of cuts out the middle man.
Do we have to go like that for everything else?
We're working on things like that for everything else, yeah, we're, we're kind of...
That just makes sense.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it's, thank you. Um, so, yeah, in that case, it was, you know, we were noticing it takes a lot of time for us to reach out to them, waiting for them to call back, uh, this way it kind of cuts off the middle person and, you know, and then it also gives us a document at the end of a contract term that says, you know, hey, you know, if we had a hundred and fifty people complain, you know, what are we going to do in the next contract round to mitigate these issues? So, uh, it'll keep all of those things documented for us long term. Um, the Civic Center, I think Eric is here, the guys painted the, uh, the lines at the Civic Center on the floor, it looks great, we've been getting a lot of compliments, including, uh, from several city council members, so, uh, thank you for that, uh, recognition and feedback, and, uh, good job, guys, it looks really good. Um, and then next, we're going to have a, a public service proclamation, so if I could ask, um, the Chief Evans and Officer Rotis and Tucker Anderson and Luke Dement, if they're here to come over in this area so that the mayor could read our proclamation. Uh, maybe up against the, the rail there so we can, uh, get some pictures while the proclamation is being, being read. All right, so I, this requires no intro, I'll let the proclamation speak for itself.
All right. So proclamation from the city of Strawberry Point, Iowa, where, uh, on December tenth, twenty twenty-four, the Clayton County Communications Center received an emergency nine-one-one call reporting a medical crisis involving a seventy-three-year-old female at one-ten West Mission Street in Strawberry Point, Iowa, who had become unresponsive, was not breathing, and was turning blue. And whereas police chief Ryan Evans and reserve police officer Chuck Rotis, responding urgently, were the first to arrive on the scene and confirmed the female had no pulse or signs of life, prompting immediate life-saving measures. And whereas Chief Evans performed manual CPR while Officer Rotis utilized an automated external defibrillator, delivering shocks and performing several rounds of CPR, successfully reviving the patient and restoring her pulse. And whereas Tucker Anderson and Luke Dement of the Strawberry Point Ambulance Service arrived shortly thereafter and skillfully applied the Lucas device to provide continuous mechanical chest compressions during transport, supported by the Regional Medical Center Ambulance Service as an advanced life support unit. And whereas the critical thinking, quick actions, and teamwork demonstrated by all played an instrumental role in saving the life of a female patient who has since, who has since been discharged from the hospital. And whereas their extraordinary heroism, dedication to duty, and commitment to the safety and well-being of our community exemplify the high standards of public service. Now therefore, I, Hannah Evans, mayor of the city of Strawberry Point, on behalf of the city council, staff, and all our residents, do hereby recognize and commend Police Chief Ryan Evans, Reserve Police Officer Chuck Rotis, Tucker Anderson, and Luke Dement for their lifesaving actions, and express our profound gratitude for their service and heroism. Be it further resolved, this proclamation be entered into the official record of the city of Strawberry Point, and that copies be presented to Chief Evans, Officer Rotis, Tucker Anderson, and Luke Dement as a token of our appreciation and admiration, and that Chief Evans and Officer Rotis be presented with the official law enforcement lifesaving commendation bar. And when and whereof this proclamation is duly executed on the fifteenth day of January twenty twenty-five.
And, uh, yeah, before, before we move on, the patient, uh, who was saved is here today and would like to say a few words, so, uh, we invite you to the podium and say much as you want.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, we are you.
I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad we were there.
Glad everybody have worked out in regional hospitals and air flight, everybody. I ended up back into, uh, the emergency room on Christmas Day and I met the, you know, T that did the tray and sat me one more time before they let me fly out.
Are you just here for work?
Cracked ribs and broken windows and everything, and I really appreciate, thank you.
No, go ahead, yeah, go ahead. And then if you have any questions for them, before they leave, maybe you guys can go in the bathroom, yeah, okay. Oh, do you want to, do you want to picture with everybody, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be great.
Only one more, one, two, three.
Great. You're welcome. Glad you're here. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget session overview and tentative schedule.
Yeah, so on the bottom of your packets, you're going to see a, uh, calendar. Um, the, uh, the county and the state have just opened up their budget, um, process and forms, and the county just uploaded all of the evaluations, um, so, uh, we can finally begin the budget process. Um, we don't have to go over every single date here, you can see an overview. Uh, basically, we're adding budget meetings to city council meetings that are regularly scheduled, so we can respect everybody's time. Uh, here's a breakdown of how I propose we'll go through the budget, this is completely changeable, you know, with feedback, and then if we need to add further budget meetings, uh, we can do them on the off weeks as needed. Um, I don't think that we'll need any additional meetings from this schedule, but if we do, we have plenty of time to do it, and, uh, and you can see here that the schedule completely coincides with, um, the state's requirements and, uh, timeline, so be pretty comfortable with this, and, uh, if there's any questions on this, I can certainly, uh, answer them.
Is the timeline pretty similar to what they did last year?
You know, I, last year's a little gray area for me, some of the things are written down, some of them aren't, and so, um, regardless of, of how it went last year, like, this process is going to be probably considerably different than how it's been done in the past.
Sure.
Um, you know, the, the most important thing, in, in my opinion, is that first meeting is establishing some goals and some vision, uh, for the city council so that we can propose a budget that accomplishes those goals, you know, like, we, we don't want to come with a budget that fully funds everything, if, if that's not the intent of the board, uh, and same thing, we don't want to assume what you're thinking and bring a budget that undervalues what, what some of the goals are. So, uh, we'll have a session beforehand, I'll have some materials for you all to consider about, like, the goal setting, and I think, uh, once we go through there, it'll take about another week to put together a proposed budget, and then we'll start, uh, chipping away at that, so, uh, I feel really comfortable, the staff has done an incredible job with the capital improvement planning, uh, each department is given extensive projects that they think are going to be coming up in the next, you know, few calendar years, uh, we're laying those all out on a spreadsheet, when we overview the capital improvement plan on this schedule, you'll see a spreadsheet of every single project that we anticipate over the next three years, approximately what we think it's going to cost, approximately what budget year we'd like to put it in, and, uh, and that will really help us to plan that capital out over multiple years, so that we're not in a mode of everybody fighting for every dollar in every budget year, you know, and this way we'll see where stuff is going. Um, and those priorities will be based on, on need, and it'll also be based on the goals that you all set as the city council, so, um, I do think it'll, you know, there will obviously be some similarities, it's, it's budget, so, you know, it's just numbers, uh, but at the same time, uh, I think you'll see it'll be a little bit more streamlined than maybe how you've done it in the past, so, uh, feel good about it.
Sounds good. Any other comments, questions? Now, we will move on to new business. Number six, motion to approve use of fire station for pancake breakfast fundraiser on March ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion second to approve use of fire station for pancake breakfast on March ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, this, this doesn't require much explanation, other than I look forward to eating a whole stack of pancakes on March ninth if, uh, if approved, and, uh, this was a request of the fire department, um, last week, so, uh, happy to have it on this agenda.
I just have a question, you always make it pretty general on what your fundraiser is, can you be more specific, usually say for equipment, what, what type of equipment? Because you've already put in for over twenty-one thousand for the, uh, pagers, and you've had soup saffers and pancakes, breakfasts. I see other towns around here say what they're raising their funds for, either new SDBAs or...
Well, if you come to one of our breakfasts, you see the sign at the door when you come in, what we're raising money for.
I cannot attend those, we cannot eat those in my family any longer.
Some of us, we go towards, uh, the rest of the wildfire here, and, uh, that means that, could you come out?
Because we can't hear about, on the microphone, yeah, you can talk.
We bought eleven sets last year.
What?
We bought eleven sets last year.
That's the...
Wild here, like, grass fire that.
Okay.
We have another fifteen to buy, so that's where some of the money is going to be.
Could, could I ask you to publish it in the paper? A lot of us would like to know that, and you'd probably bring in more money if we knew where it was going for.
I don't know how much more we can put in the paper.
You guys said equipment, right?
Yeah, it's equipment. Thirty years up, breaks down, doesn't come into the council, but we buy it ourselves. It, every, everyone has to come to the fire station, often however, every piece of equipment the fire association bought through the city.
I'm just asking if you would publish it in the paper.
Fire association's equipment, it's the city, we buy it for the city.
Yeah.
We cannot do a fundraiser and make the city buy everything, and I don't think you could have a budget bigger, of course.
All right, let me interject in this, like, the request was, if you could be any more specific about the fundraiser and where the money goes, I think it's decent feedback and should be considered, you know, like, we don't need a yes or a no, we don't need a whatever, but, you know, it, it is always good, and like, set up, there's signage that says what it's for, so, let's just take it as decent feedback and consider it moving forward, is that, is that fair for you?
I think that would only be fair.
I mean, we don't waste the money.
Nobody, nobody said that.
No, I didn't say that, I just like to know, uh, what you're purchasing, and if you don't know prior, when you do buy it, it would be nice if you put a little blurb in the paper, I know the paper's more than happy to get that kind of information.
Well, we just purchased twenty-two chargers for our pagers, so we wouldn't go over the twenty-two thousand, so we bought those ourselves.
That would, that would be a hundred dollars.
Can we call for a vote? Yeah. All right, so motion second to approve pancake breakfast on March ninth. Uh, go to vote, Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, number seven, motion to approve the urban renewal report and direct the city administrators to submit. I'll make the motion. Second. Motion second to approve the urban renewal report and to submit.
Okay, so this is a really exciting report of zero dollars in and zero dollars out, but we are required by law to, um, to submit this, and, uh, we do have a balance in that account of about sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars, and, uh, um, we'll be proposing in the next year's budget on how to, um, do a budget amendment to move that out of the Tiff district and into a project that is eligible, uh, so that we can close that out and not have to do this report anymore, since it's been, you know, long defunct, so, uh, this is a perfunctory matter, and, uh, it has to be done before we can legally start the budget process.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's a great idea, because we, we thought in the previous years that this money was returned because it had been spent.
Yeah.
But after you have contacted county and found out that it can be moved and we can spend it for...
Yeah, the discrepancy was that the county thought that we owed them, uh, but we got it settled by the state, you know, we talked to Ted, he looked up the balance, said, this is the balance, and this is what you can do with it, so, we have a very specific list of, of areas that we can use that money in, and then we'll, we'll use it as such, and not return it to anybody, like, that's our...
Where we can keep it.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, we're evolved, Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Number eight, resolution twenty-five oh one, approving installation of a second egress store in the infant room for Berry Tender daycare at the Civic Center with a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars.
I still move.
Second.
Okay, this is a, um, as it says in the resolution, it is the second egress store, uh, this is not a budgeted amount, um, for the Civic Center, so I want everybody to be very aware of that, and, uh, are there, um, people here from Berry Tender who want to come up and say a couple of words? Yeah?
I don't know what mom said. Our, our state fire marshal came in and did this inspection.
Can you come up here, say, and get you on the microphone? Yeah, just, what do you need, what do you require, and so on and so forth.
Hi, I'm Jessica from daycare. So, our state fire marshal came in, did this inspection, and told me that the room, how it is right now, currently, because we only have ten children in their licensed potential room, because there was only one exit. There's actually two doors side by side, but we're not, so it needs to be a new door put in.
Yeah.
Can I ask what you gained by having the second door, did, do you get to have more kids in there than that?
Yeah, so the room is actually licensed for, like, we can, square footage, why, between the eighteen kids in there? So, it would gain the same kids.
Yeah, and, and then you also, um, you also got donated labor to install that door, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we reached out to SMI, and they said they would donate the labor, and everything, we just checked in for the door.
Yeah.
So it just says to go on a different wall?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you tell me where it's going?
So we go, we go out the west.
Okay.
So we reach for that up.
So go to the outside?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, the, we put five thousand in there so that it won't exceed that, but the actual quote is just over three thousand, uh, and that includes, like, well around two thousand dollars in free labor, um, which is much appreciated, if it's, it's voted up.
Absolutely, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Deb?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
Upstate.
Megan?
Yes.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, number nine, resolution twenty-five oh two, appointing a city council member to fill a vacant seat completing a term ending September thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Right, so here there just needs to be a motion and a second to begin the discussion, and once that happens, I'll lay out, uh, the process for everybody.
I still move for twenty-five oh two, appointing a council member.
Second. All right, motion second.
Okay, great, so this is, um, to fill the vacant seats left by Jason Gerhardt, who is now in the Iowa House, so, we, um, we had a public process where, you know, we asked people online, in person, anybody who was interested in potentially being appointed to, uh, come into City Hall, uh, we took all of their information and created a profile piece on each of them, which are included in your packets, uh, great detail and care was, was made to make sure that each candidate was, uh, presented in, in a similar fashion and, uh, um, in an unbiased way, and, uh, so we have three candidates that, that stood up, and so the process will be this, um, anybody who gets appointed tonight is going to require three votes, um, the mayor obviously does not vote, and also, uh, if there is a tie vote, the mayor cannot legally break that tie in an appointment process, so, um, what'll happen is, we're going to open up the floor, the three candidates are here, you can ask any questions you want, if the candidates would like to give a, a one-minute introduction, uh, and, you know, maybe talk about why they want to do this, you can ask them each questions, and then it'll be up to somebody to amend this motion, uh, right now with the specific person's name, then it will go to a vote, if that person does not, does not get a three vote, uh, then somebody could also move to amend the motion with another person's name, and then that'll go to a vote, and so on and so forth. Uh, I do want to point out that, um, if no persons are appointed tonight, that legally we would have to go to a special election, uh, that special election could take a month or two and a cost of around two to three thousand dollars to taxpayers around town, so, uh, keep that in mind, and, uh, if you have any questions for me on the process, uh, before we open the floor, now would be a great time to ask. No? Okay. So I'd like to invite, uh, the candidates who are here to come up to the podium, give maybe a, a brief introduction, your name, uh, why you want to do this, and anything else you want to share, so we can just go, whoever wants to go first. All right, Larry, you're up.
Good evening, and thanks for being here, I am Larry Myers, um, relatively new to the town, but not new to city and county government. I've been, uh, alderman, if it was called, I don't know why they put the man on, but anyway, I've been alderman in Davenport for ten years, and I was on the city council, uh, I chaired, I think, every committee, we have four standing committees on different subjects, and chaired those, and then I was elected, uh, for, for terms to this county board of supervisors, um, those are three, uh, two-year terms, and three were four-year terms, so fourteen years there. So I've experienced quite a bit of experience, but on the other hand, I, I do understand, and it's very clear to me, that coming from a town of a hundred thousand to a town of about eleven hundred in rural Iowa, where I grew up, uh, is quite a different, uh, work, piece of work, and you have to, I have to learn too about things, it's not that, well, I can bring some things from my experience there, but I have to learn about Strawberry Point and the dynamics of this community. I was so pleased, in the last week, there was a article in the Civic Record Center about Iowa and its issues growing, and especially rural Iowa, and of course, we're right in the middle of that part of rural Iowa that's primarily agricultural, and also, I appreciated the articles in the Press Journal that talks about Iowa, and I would certainly encourage you to read that as well, and specifically, it talks about, like, how many of this area of Iowa and the challenges that are faced, and I can see that here, it cannot be easy, running a small town in rural Iowa with decreasing population, with an aging population, that's, that is a... Running a small town in rural Iowa with decreasing population, with an aging population, that's, that is a challenge and a major challenge. And in five years, or ten years, or twenty years, what are we going to be? And I think that's really, in a sense, the biggest challenge that I see, a small town in Iowa, really wonderful small town. Think, how do you allocate your resources? How do you make the town attractive to people? How do you bring young people into this town? What are we doing or how are we doing it? And I think it's only by coming together and having some pretty significant discussions that we can say, "This is how this will work," so that we can be an active, attractive, exciting city for people to look at and say, "I'm happy I'm living here." And that, I think, is the biggest challenge that we face. We have a lot of advantages. I think, my goings on...
I've got to, I'll, I'll, I'll wrap, yeah. Yeah, if you can wrap up the introduction, because we still want to have time for questions and answers.
Of course.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Listen, Dave, uh, you have to stay here now, so they can grill you, yeah. All right, if there's any questions for this candidate, now would be an appropriate time to ask.
I have a question. What is the most important thing or the number one thing that you would like to see changed or addressed in Strawberry Point?
You know, that's a question I thought about asking each of you. If I was elected, what is the, what is, what are the one or two most important things that you think we can do to put Strawberry Point on the map? I'll just say it that way. I don't know what that means, but, uh... And what has been the most, maybe the most difficult thing we've had to do, and maybe the least productive thing we've had to do in the last couple, three, four years? Because I would like to know that, because then, then any of us who are coming onto the council, I don't know where, where at in making things work. And I don't feel qualified to answer that question yet, but I think you do, and you do. And that's why it's so important to have, uh, discussion, so that all of you, uh, have a contributing... In fact, the whole community really needs to be involved. And it would be kind of interesting to sit down or two, a hundred people, and have them write an answer to that, those questions. And then maybe that would give the, give us, as a council and a city administrator, a, you know, a, uh, sort of memo on, oh, maybe we should look at this or look at that.
Right, any other questions for Larry? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who's up next?
I'm Bill Royce. I just moved to the community coming two years in February. I'm not much of a public speaker. I, uh, kind of worked in the background of most businesses and things I've been associated with. Dean asked me when I came in and inquired about that. He said, "Did you ever been in politics?" "We're not in politics." I guess help public officer. No, I'm not help public officer. I, uh, have had a remodeling business for the last sixty-some years. I had a rather large remodeling business. I know how to manage a pretty good-sized company, not like the city of, uh, Strawberry Point. And that's Dean's field with the, your approval or disapproval, whichever. And I thought that with my management ability, that I might be able to help out. Only been here a couple of years. I don't know a great, you know, hm, citizens who've been here a lot of years. I got pretty well appointed as my neighbor. I live right across from Shell. The, uh, I think that it isn't like it used to be in that, as neighbors, we don't neighbor as well as we probably should. Mrs. Evans just lives up the street from here. I haven't really gotten down to visit with her, but we're trying to be neighborly. I thought maybe I might be able to help out with, uh, bringing a different perspective. And being in remodeling all my life, if you understand remodeling in business at all, you'll know that I've worked with, uh, a lot of weapons.
He's surrounded by them.
And the board seems to be quite different. In remodeling, I, I have to keep mama happy. I'm not going to lose the pay for it if I can satisfy the lady. Though I have other members of the community that also have to satisfy, you know, do my best to do that. As far as the political end of it, about all I, this, well, I've been in politics all my life, but I've been behind the scenes and never held a position, except for the board review in Trea County. I sat on that for fifteen, twenty years, something like that. So, I thought I knew, didn't lost settling of, uh, disputes and taxes and, and fair taxes and people that are feeling they were overtaxed or over assessed. Actually, we had nothing to do with taxes, but whether the assessment was, was accurate or, uh, fair, that's it. And that's, I think, what we need to do as a city. I understand the firemen. I heard there's a bit of an issue here between firemen and city and so forth. I have full respect for all you firemen. I did one for myself, and I know that when you're in, I ride on a, seen in the middle of the night, where the house is flames so, hm, so bad that you knew you were almost saved the house. You didn't know if anybody was home in the house when the fire started. And I, I dread that kind of situation, and I think you guys all go through that. I also went to the training of, of, uh, learning that your hose that you are carrying into a dark building with forty masks and everything, that's your lifeline. Now, if you stumble across somebody that needs to be taken out, you have to be on your toes, know what to do, because you could be easily lost. I respect all the firemen, what they do, the anti-police people, what they do to, to people. And questions? I'll try and answer them.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to ask the same question. What is the number one priority or thing you would like to see addressed or changed in Strawberry Point?
Give me that again. I didn't understand.
What is the, the number one thing that you would like to see addressed in Strawberry Point or changed? What would be a priority that you would like to make a change to?
I can't, I can't truthfully answer that. I've not been here long enough to know what the problems are. I had a, then I, oh, basically, oh, I know, is what I read in the paper. I heard that there's some, some friction between this council and the fire department, and I'd certainly like to see that solved because the fire department is very important. City government's very important. And I, I don't believe in deficit spending, so I'd like to see a balanced budget. Not that I am aware that there is a deficit spending, but I've seen some places that are. And I don't want to run like a federal government. We don't have sugar daddy, baby.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, Dan, that'd be you, sir.
I'm Dana Tyler. I just recently moved to Strawberry about four years ago. Been coming here my whole life, and how can I follow your path? One, one thing I can say is, um, I don't bring a lot of experience, but every professional started out rough. I'm eager to learn. I'm ready to take on any challenges that you put in front of me. And I don't have a plan on leaving Strawberry. Like I tell people when they ask me, you know, "What are your plans?" I, my plans are from the east end of town, or the west end of town. My next move is to the east end of town. I don't have a plan on leaving Strawberry. I love this place.
Great. Any questions for Dan?
I'll ask the same question. What is the number one priority that you'd like to see changed or addressed in Strawberry?
I would love to see everybody become a family. Every citizen in Strawberry family with one another. And like the other, the other gentleman, you know, I, there's a lot of stuff I have to learn, and I'm eager to learn. And for the last twenty-six years I've been around, more women, I think they do that.
Okay.
I worked for, getting rid of my school birthday, I ran around a lot of children. And one of my priorities, like, the swimming pool. I really hate the idea of getting rid of the swimming pool. I think if, you, you hear people talk, years ago, I went to the swimming pool, then I went to the hot water stand, and then I went to the ice cream shop, and, and I love that. You know, I see a lot of kids come and go in the district in to be, and if we can take half of them and get them to grow up to be productive citizens in society, I love that. And I know the pool seemed like much to a lot of grownups, but to the kid, they're just like that school bus driver you had. You're always going to remember, you're always going to remember these things, and I want to see more things come to Strawberry to, to the kids can interact with.
Any other questions for Dan?
I have a question for all three. Um, I guess my question is, should this go to special election? Are you willing to do the due diligence and put your name on the ballot? Are you willing to go out and get the, get the signatures it takes to put your name on the ballot and be voting on it?
One hundred percent.
I hadn't really given that a lot of thought. This was to fill out the term, uh, term or something. And so, I can't answer your questions specifically yet. But I, since I've run, you know, twelve or thirteen times before, I would see it as a challenge, I'm sure, again, and would be willing to do that.
Do you want to answer the, the question?
My opinion is that I don't see the necessity of the extra money it's going to cost the city, can do that, expect in other ways, whether I would, whether I would take the time to go out and campaign and all that sort of, I mean, I don't think I... I guess I, 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 I think the city council as it is capable of selecting somebody that they could work with and that, uh, could be useful to the city for the next eleven months. I look at the cost. Do you want anything? Why?
Thank you, everybody.
So, and then if the board, or if the city council wants to deliberate at all amongst your, like, obviously in public, but if there's any deliberations before amending the, uh, the motion, that would be appropriate.
I, I mean, I appreciate everybody stepping up. I mean, that's, that's a step in the right direction is putting your willingness to do a job.
I never even looked into the, uh, the maximum pay that you ladies get, so.
It's not lucrative. I can assure you of that. So, if, if there's no more deliberations, then it's up to any city council member to amend the motion, uh, with a nominee.
Amend the motion to appoint Larry to fill the vacant seat on the city council.
Right, and then there has to be a second, and then deliberation and a vote on that.
A second. Motion and second to amend resolution 2502, appointing Larry Minor to fill the vacant seat.
Correct.
Any questions? Comments? I think I asked, and I'll just ask out loud, is that a conflict of interest if there had to be a tiebreaker moving forward on votes?
I- in terms of if Larry is appointed to a seat, is there a conflict of interest because of the relation to the mayor's children?
Yeah.
Uh, no, there would not be a legal conflict of interest. Um, you know, it would be up to...
And I'm not a tiebreaker vote anyway. I can't vote.
Right, right. So, so no, to answer the question, there's not a legal conflict. It, it's not an immediate family member. Um, it's removed by two generations at least, so, uh, there's not a legal conflict there. It would be up to the city council member, if appointed, to determine if, if you thought that there was a perceived conflict of interest on any certain votes, similarly to how you have to decide from time to time if there's a perceived conflict on, on fire department things. So, but no legal conflict whatsoever.
Larry has a question.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I, I don't know what's on that. I can't remember. It was on the sheet or not, but I am on the museum board.
Yeah, there's...
And there are issues that could be a conflict there, and I've had enough experience to know that I am to refuse myself in, in those, and would expect that, um, that I would expect, I would do that on my own, but I would also expect if I didn't, that someone would tell me that legally you have to refuse yourself.
Sure.
I'm perfectly comfortable doing that.
Yeah. And, and I also want to remind you that we do also have a board protocol about those conflicts. So, you know, if the board thinks that there's a conflict, even though the person doesn't, we do have a process to vote on that. So, uh, I, you know, that's pretty well documented so far.
Any other questions? Comments? Now, we'll go to vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Megan?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
All right, motion failed.
So, now it would be up to a city council member to, uh, if there was another nominee, to amend the motion, name that nominee, and then deliberate and go to a vote.
Amend the motion to vote Dan Filer in council member to fill out the term.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to amend resolution 2502 to appoint Dan Filer to fill the vacant city council seat.
And then if there's any deliberations ahead of the vote.
Comments? Questions? Now, we'll go to vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Ibid. So, it, uh, same, if there's one more nominee, uh, if there's somebody to amend the motion, uh, or not, it doesn't have to be a motion, but if there is, now would be the type two amended.
Is it something that can be tabled, so we're able to, now that these candidates have had a chance to speak publicly, that we have a chance to kind of go out and talk to constituents and see what their...
We, we don't. It, this has to be decided or in this meeting, or it has to go to a special election.
There are so many days. Am I correct in saying that you had to appoint somebody?
Yeah, there, the, the, the nominee had to be appointed within sixty days of the vacancy, and so the deadline will come up between this meeting and the next meeting.
Just waited till last minute?
I mean, if there are constituents that you want to talk to that are here, you could, the mayor could always have a recess for ten or fifteen minutes. Um, conversations can be had, and then we could reconvene. Like that, that's...
because this position isn't important to me that I'm going to be embarrassed or be mad.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't have any private discussions. This has to be, because it's a board meeting or a city council meeting, it has to be done in public. And it's not an HR issue, so it's, all the deliberations have to be public, unfortunately. All right, so if there's not another motion, then this resolution fails and it will go to a special election. So it's up to the mayor to put a time limit on whether, how much longer you want to wait for a motion.
Okay. I would really hate to see that happen because, like we've stated, that just seems like an unnecessary cost for the city when this person will be on the ballot again in November if they so choose. So I'll give everybody another minute to really think.
I feel like putting the wrong person in council is just as much of a cost. And I think without, I mean, do we have a vision as a board? Do we have a vision of, before we plug someone in, it's like, for us to make that decision without a vision, how does that work? Like, what are our goals? What are we trying to strive for? Because by putting someone on with us, we want to create something for the greater good. I do anyway. I mean, I'm not speaking for everyone, but that's how I feel.
I think that we all feel that way. We just have different opinions about it at this point in time.
Right, but we have to have a collaborative vision. Because if my vision doesn't match all of us as a whole, we're all peddling in.
Different directions.
Different directions.
But you can't force someone to have the same.
No, I'm not saying that, but a common goal is better than four in a row.
Absolutely, but you can't force someone to have the same opinion in a specific set of time.
No.
Well, and to your point, I mean, I don't think an election would sell that either because, I mean.
No, but the people get to speak then.
Right, but everybody in the city had an option to come up and put their name in the hat too, so.
And I feel there's so much that goes on that if you've had some kind of experience in all the years that Larry has had, it's going to be for eleven months.
Right, but if your last experience was in nineteen ninety, that's thirty years ago. The world has changed a lot in thirty years.
You've got to remember that all of us are up here hardly inexperienced. I mean, Hannah was young when you got on, you learned lots of things.
Larry wants to speak.
All right, go ahead.
My experience on, it would have been on Scott County Board of Supervisors ended in two thousand and fourteen. And at that point, I chaired the Bi-State Regional Commission, which meant I had to work with people from Iowa and from Illinois, Rock Island, Belize, Sanford, Bedard, and had to make things, had to achieve things because we couldn't have two states doing things that didn't connect with the Mississippi, you understand, with the Mississippi River between us. We had to make things work. And that was one of my primary responsibilities in the last decade, really, of my elective life. We had a Republican congressman from the Iowa side, Chip Leach. We had a Democrat congressman from the Illinois side, same time. We were, all the timers, and we were working with two political parties on either side of the river, and we had to get things done to grow the area. It just wasn't imperative thing. So it meant putting two points of view at times together and working with the elected officials in Scott County, Rock Island County, Muskegon County, and Plating County on the Iowa side, and two counties then on the Illinois side. And all of us had to make it go. It was all about it.
Thank you.
And I can't say I know in any depth what kinds of divisions or what kinds of feelings are out in our community here in Strawberry Point that we would have to listen to in order to train Strawberry Point as a community together and project it in the future in challenging times. I don't think the next five or ten years, I wouldn't be on their front, but are going to be easy because the world is changing. Agriculture is changing. Everything is changing, and somehow we have to take the people we have here, fewer and fewer actually, to make those decisions and especially to appeal to young people to come here and live. And how do we connect things here and say, "Oh, this is the place where we can live. We've got a beautiful town. We've got backbone carp. We have two highways that go through this town, which other small towns in this area don't have." I mean, we have potential. We just need the community to bring that potential together, articulate it, and say ten years, ten years from now, this is something good. There is, I don't know if you've heard of the ten, ten, ten slogan about things in agriculture and the community government. When you pass something, what is your feeling ten minutes after it passed? Are you happy? Are you, I don't know? Ten weeks after it passed, what's your feeling? Ten years after it passed, what's your feeling? Did you do the right thing that day? You know, we have to move forward, even when we're working out hundreds of information on what will make this community, and we think we can do it. I mean, I think you can, I think you have certain.
Thank you.
I'd like to say much thanks for Larry, though. Ever since they've moved to town, I don't think you've seen anybody that's been more diligent in walking this town, picking up trash, visiting with people anywhere, any place in this town. And him and his wife actually did that beautification and gave away money this last year for the home they thought had beautified the most in this community. So between him and Carol, they've really taken a liking to this.
They probably have given.
Yes, they've given a lot to this community. They really have. And Carol was on the library board, and so my husband's worked with her. If you need any more pip, a lot of you work during the day, so you don't see the retirees and the people that are out and about during the day. But I just thought you all need to know. He's very diligent about being out and visiting with his community.
I'll make the motion again to put Dan Tyler until the end of the term.
I'll second.
Motion second to amend resolution 2502 to appoint Dan Tyler to fill the vacant city council seat. Comments? Questions? Want to vote a vote, Megan?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
All right, other business.
That's it for me. Nothing for Jim?
No.
I make the motion to.
Second. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.